I'd like to call the Tuesday, December 17th, 2019 Papillion City Council Meeting to order. Ms. Brown, would you please take the roll?
Sunday, Mumgaard, Gaines, Glover, Jaworski, Klug, Stube, Ingberg.
Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have an affidavit of publication on file?
We do.
And a current copy of the Open Meetings Act is posted in the back of the council chambers. We have a special presentation tonight. Chief, invite you up.
Tonight, Mayor Black is going to swear in Officer Jonathan Ward. John, would you like to introduce your family?
Yes, this is my son Eric, who's here with us tonight.
And his family in blue in their back behind me. If some of you are having deja vu moment right now, don't be alarmed, he's been here before. Jonathan first joined the Papillion Police Department on September 5th, I'm sorry, September 8th, 2015, along with two other officers, Jacob Davis and April Kozeminski. Jonathan and his classmates, they graduated from the Nebraska Law Enforcement Training Academy in Grand Island. Jonathan had previously retired from a long military career with the United States Air Force, and his final station had been off at Air Force Base. Unfortunately, on February 5th, 2015, Jonathan resigned his position as police officer in order to follow his wife, who at the time was still serving in the United States Air Force, because she had been reassigned to Upper New York State. And this was a huge blow for our police department, because he was well-liked, he's been known as being very energetic, being very vocal, and very competitive, and pushed everybody around him. I remember at the time, during the exit interview, he kept on insisting that he was going to be back, and I just quietly nodded, because at the time, I didn't, you never know what the cogs of the universe are going to do, and whether that opportunity would come back, but it did, and we're so happy for that. Once he, he and his family resettled in Upper New York, he became a police officer for the city of Norwood, and he remained there until recently. Now, as his wife closes in on her retirement, Jonathan and his family are returning home to Papillion. He will have almost immediate effect in our patrol shifts and our morale, with the shortened FTO period, and I'm just so very happy to be welcoming him home tonight.
And you've still got to do the oath, and I think we have the longest oath that exists, so if you'd raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Jonathan Michael Ward.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
And the Constitution of the State of Nebraska.
Against all enemies.
Against all enemies.
Foreign and domestic.
Foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith.
That I will bear true faith.
And allegiance to the same.
And allegiance to the same.
That I take this obligation freely.
That I take this obligation freely.
And without mental reservation.
And without mental reservation.
Or for purpose of evasion.
Or for purpose of evasion.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
Perform the duties of a police officer.
According to law and the best of my ability.
According to law and the best of my ability.
And I do further swear.
And I do further swear.
That I do not advocate.
That I do not advocate.
Or am a member of.
Or am a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
That advocates the overthrow of the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
And that during such time.
And during such time.
As I am in this position.
As I am in this position.
I will not advocate.
I will not advocate.
Nor become a member of.
Nor become a member of.
Any political party or organization.
Any political party or organization.
That advocates the overthrow.
That advocates the overthrow.
Of the government of the United States.
Of the government of the United States.
Or of this state.
Or of this state.
By force or violence.
By force or violence.
So help me God.
So help me God.
It's nice that somebody leaves and actually wants to come back.[338.52][338.52][laughter] It's a nice statement. Administrators' report, Ms. Myers.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple quick comments this evening. Just a reminder to city council members and to department heads is that you'll be receiving an email with your SWOT analysis. Again, we're preparing for our council retreat and our strategic plan that's scheduled for Thursday, January 16th. So, again, when you receive that, I would expect that's coming out before December 20th. Please complete that and get that back to us, we certainly appreciate that. And then lastly, again, just to let you know that next week, of course, is Christmas, and so we'll be closing all city offices early at 2:00 PM on Tuesday, December 24th, so that our employees can spend some additional time with their families and friends. That's all I have.
Thank you very much. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Voting.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Klug. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is item E1. Ordinance 1865, an ordinance to amend Papillion Municipal Code, Section 3526D, to increase the amount allowed each year for the annual employee recognition dinner to $50 per elected employee and elected official. This is a public hearing. Do we have any proponents? Do we have any opponents? Close the public hearing. Item F1, Ordinance 1859, an ordinance to amend Article 38 Wireless Telecommunications Facilities of Chapter 205 of the Papillion Municipal Code, having to do with small wireless facilities and small wireless facility support poles. The applicant is the city of Papillion. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1859?
No.
Motion by Councilman Glover.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Related item, F2, Ordinance 1862, an ordinance to amend the Papillion Municipal Code to add a new Chapter 207 entitled "Telecommunications: Regulating Small Wireless Facilities." The applicant's city of Papillion. Do we have a motion to approve Ordinance 1862?
No.
Motion by Councilman Jaworski.
Second.
Second by Councilman Gaines. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F3, Ordinance 1863, an ordinance to amend Chapter 9 Boards, Commissions, and Committees of the Papillion Municipal Code regarding the Library Board. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1863?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Any discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F4, Ordinance 1864, an ordinance to approve a change of zone from R1 Single Family Residential Low Density to R4 Multi-Family Residential for the property legally described as Tax Lot 2, Section 23, Township 14 North, Range 12 East, generally located at 402 East Centennial Road. The applicant is the Papillion La Vista Community Schools. Is there a motion to approve Ordinance 1864?
No.
Motion by Councilman Stube. Second by Councilman Glover. There is a staff recommended motion to amend Ordinance 1864 to reflect the correct current zoning designation of R1 Single Family Residential. Is there a motion to amend?
Motion.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Glover. Any proponents on the motion to amend? Opponents? Council discussion? Please vote on the motion to amend.
Can I ever make a comment here?
Yes.
Never mind, I'll hold it on.
Motion is amended. Council discussion on the amended motion. Mr. Mumgaard.
I just want to praise the school district. This is an excellent addition to that area. That land has sat empty for decades. Hard to get to, hard to get any development of. This is an excellent use of that property, and I commend the school district for doing it.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote on motion as amended. Motion passes. Next is item F5. Resolution R190239, a resolution to approve the 2020 trash hauling applications. If there's no objections, we'll handle them all at once. A is Abe's Trash Service, B is Gretna Sanitation, C is Premier Waste Solutions, D is Waste Connections of Nebraska Doing Businesses Papillion Sanitation, E is Waste Management of Nebraska, and F is Waste Services of Nebraska. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190239?
No.
Motion by Councilman Ingberg.
Second.
Second by Councilman Stube. Proponents? Do we have any opponents? Council discussion, Mr. Mumgaard.
Yeah, I just want to take this opportunity, since they're all here in the building, or at least hopefully they're paying attention, to remind you that the city ordinances prohibit collecting trash in a residential area before 6:00 AM. I have this summer received complaints that one, at least one of you, and I won't say who, was ignoring that ordinance. Now, I commend people who want to get up and go to work and get going, but not, 6:00 AM is plenty early enough to be picking up trash. So I just want to take this opportunity to please remind you, because if I get any more complaints, somebody's going to be coming to visit you. Thank you.
Mr. Sunday.
We're going to be voting on a one- and six-year road plan later in this meeting. There's a great amount of money being spent on road repairs. I'm just going to voice my concern right now. I have nothing against any of these companies, but there's six different waste service companies here. I'm hopeful that by this time next year, we can put this out for bid on a contract to limit it to one or two companies to take care of Papillion's trash needs. The reason I say that is, Thursday and Friday, it's just one garbage truck after another going through the neighborhoods here in town, and they're, you know, frankly, they're tearing up our roads. And I think that's costing the taxpayers a lot of money. I don't think this is very wise, the way we've got it set up here, having this many trash collection services driving through our city streets day after day after day.
On that note, a little bit for public education, but then to recognize the comment. I think it's about every, I don't know, four to five years, I think, a council member does raise what you raised, and it's been investigated a few times, comes back to the council, and it has always been recommended to stay with the current method. But recognizing councils' change and times change, I think what we'll do, because you did ask that maybe this time next year, we've thought about it, I think we'll take it as an opportunity to put it to a committee, so we can research the pros and cons again, kind of update the previous research, and then kind of update you on where that is, and then we can figure out where to go, if that's fair. Okay, thank you. Any other council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is item F6, Resolution R190244, a resolution to approve a dedication of Street Right-of-Way for One Tract of South 150th Street Right-of-Way within Tax Lot 3A1A2-2-13-11. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190244?
No.
Motion by Councilman Stube.
Second.
Second by Councilman Jaworski. Any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Item F7, Resolution R190245, a resolution to approve a contract modification, number one, to the construction management agreement between the city of Papillion and Sampson Construction Company to modify the guaranteed maximum price for the Papillion Community Center and Field House to accommodate for additional construction and site work costs, and to accommodate for the completion of the softball complex, to extend the contract period for the community center to December 31st, 2019, and to extend the contract period to complete the softball complex to August 31st, 2020. Is there a motion to approve Resolution R190245? Motion by Councilman Jaworski, second by Councilman Klug. Any proponents? Opponents? Council discussion? Mr. Mumgaard.
First off, I want to make sure people who might be watching this know what we're doing here. We are now moving forward on a plan that we weren't planning on for several years, and going to build the softball complex that will be adjacent to Papillion Landing. And we can do that, only because Sampson Construction did such a wonderful job in fitting in the budget for Field House and the Landing. If that hadn't happened, we would be sitting there, and Papillion kids could not play softball there for many years. So first of all, I commend Sampson for what they've done and the position they've put us in, and secondly, I look forward to seeing the first pitch at the Papillion Landing Softball Complex.
And a part of that, too, Ms. Hanson secured a grant from the state of Nebraska from the arena turnback tax of $750,000, and so that, thank you for that as well. Ms. Klug.
Thank you. I'd like to add on to what Councilman Mumgaard said, and also acknowledge that many of our staff, along with Jay Palau and Lori, did a lot of upfront work, and therefore, we didn't do a lot of changes on this. And the lack of changes has also really helped us control the costs. So I think we need to also recognize there was a lot of staff members who put in a lot of hours to get this right also, along with Sampson Construction.
Thank you. Mr. Ingberg.
Strictly, as Tesco mentioned, but to add to what Councilman Mumgaard said, by doing the complex now, it officially completes Phase 1 of the project. Without it, we would not complete the first phase we had planned on. So I congratulate everyone, did all the work to do it.
Any other council discussion? Please vote. Motion passes. Next is item F8. Resolution R190246, this is a public hearing and a vote, a resolution to approve the one- and six-year road plan for years 2020 to 2027. This is a public hearing, I'll open it. Do we have any proponents? Anybody want to speak in favor? Do we have any opponents? And if you'd state your name for the record, and allow five minutes of testimony for each person. Thank you.
My name is Paula Adams. And I'm sorry, the second part you asked was?
Oh, we're just, each testimony's five minutes.
Okay, thank you. So, Honorable Mr. Mayor, honorable city council members, I would like to go against the one-to-six-year plan, and I have a specific project, this would be work project M483-226, that I am opposing. I am not opposing the rest of the project. The work project, M483-226, would be an extension of Beetle Street, so that it would intersect with First Street. It would be connecting a dead end on a neighborhood. I am here to object to it. I specifically moved to Papillion because I wanted a better quality of life. I wanted to live in a quiet neighborhood where I could go home and I could sleep at night. I came from Omaha, I lived by Interstate 80, the traffic went incessantly. I never, ever got a break. It got quieter at night. It took me a year and a half to find a house at the end of a cul-de-sac that I liked. I've spent four years working on this house. I would say about a week ago, we discovered that Papillion was planning to join this, because we saw city assessors out there. At the moment I discovered this, I hadn't realized it. I decided that I would go and talk to people, because I was concerned. The part of the reason I moved to Papillion was to come to a better place and have a better life. I don't want that better quality of life to be eroded. I purposefully moved to a quiet neighborhood. And I want to live at the end of a cul-de-sac and have a good quality of life, and not worry about going out and having people cutting the corner. I happen to live in the house that will be right on the corner of this. So I'm asking you to reconsider that part of the work project that's in the one-to-six-year plan, because I believe it would erode the quality of life in the neighborhood.
Thank you. Do we have any other opponents? Again, if you'd state your name for the record.
My name's Bill Smith. I'm Paula's husband. Our address is 121 Beetle Street, that's right at the end of Beetle, where the construction will be. And as, along with her, I'm opposed for the same reasons she gave. Now, she and I did speak with Councilman Ingberg and Steve Thompson the other day on this as well, because of the curiosity that came up. By the fact that I'm retired, I saw the surveyors out there, that's the only way I knew about it. I went down and asked them, and, you know, kind of helping him to tell me what was going on, he did disclose that, yes, they were going to extend the street through. So my thoughts there are that there are already, it's a, the size of the neighborhood is approximately a square mile, estimating. There are already nine entry points, paved entry points into that neighborhood, four on the north, four on the west, one on the south. On Beetle Street, that would add one more on the south, about 700 feet to the east of where Jefferson Street already exits. So in travel time, if you're going the speed limit, that's seven or eight seconds. Now, in terms of serving the neighborhood with better access to either emergency service or people trying to get out towards the east or towards the north, it doesn't really seem that this selection provides the best solution. It would seem that perhaps Osage Street or Third Street on the east side going into American Parkway might be a better solution. So within the plan, only the Beetle Street option is listed, and I kind of wonder why the other ones haven't been considered, or if they have, and they were just dropped out of hand for reasons I don't know. So I think, you know, we talked to our neighbors a little bit about it just last evening, and some of the group out here are those neighbors. I don't really know if they're going to speak or not, I kind of hope so, but at least they are here in presence, and they share our opinion. And I think that anyone in that neighborhood who lives on one of these dead-end streets or one of the quieter cul-de-sacs or corners, they're going to think the same way. It only takes about 60 seconds to drive from our house at the bottom of the neighborhood up to Cornhusker to get out. So even if we were to jump right around on the First Street and go to 72nd, you know, it's not really going to save us any time or convenience. So again, I would hope that you can reconsider that, and take our thoughts in mind, because we did move there after searching for a year and a half.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have any other opponents? And again, if you'd state your name for the record.
Leroy Lape. I live at 222 North Beetle, and we don't like the idea of all the traffic up and down. Beetle Street goes all the way to Cary. I just think this is just going to make a vast street out of a nice, quiet neighborhood.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Any other opponents?
Hi, Jason Parmer. I live at 429 East Second, right at the intersection. I think a lot of us would have appreciated some kind of a heads-up. We're coming home from work, we find people standing in people's yards digging out stakes, setting stakes, whatever they're doing, and for them not to tell us exactly what they're there for, I think that upset a lot of people. I understand Papillion's not necessarily do what they want to do, but inform the communities, maybe we can all pull together and come out with some kind of solution, because we have kids that we're, don't even let play in the front yard now, because we got a problem with cars running 50, 60 mile an hour down our street the way it is. It's going to cause a big accident at some point, and we don't want the riffraff come flying off First Street. We already know the response time of the police department, they're in that neighborhood in a flash, EMTs, they're there in a flash, so using this as an excuse of better serving your community area, getting into your neighborhood for emergencies is sidelining us, I think. But there's a lot of neighbors that don't even know what's going on, and this amount was just informed last night, because one concerned neighbor found out what's going on. So I have a feeling we're going to have a lot more people here, and a lot more people upset about this, unless everybody gets on the same page and discusses it instead of these surprise meetings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other opponents?
I'm Joseph Dobias Jr. I live at 203 North Beetle. I've lived at that house for 20 years. I grew up literally five blocks north of there, on Beetle Street. The reason I bought that house where I did is because it's a nice, quiet neighborhood. And I don't see any advantage to opening up that part of the street. All it's going to do is bring more high school kids driving up Beetle to get up to school, and you can't keep 84th Street safe from the traffic. How are you going to keep our little street safe from the traffic? And I agree with him, they already drive 50 miles an hour down that street, Third Street, Second Street, and it's like, if you open that street up, it will just cause more problems than any advantages that I can see. That's my opinion. Take it for what it is.
Thank you.
You bet.
Do we have any other opponents?
My name's Kim Thompson, I live at 429 East Second Street. I bought my house from my grandparents when they passed away. So I played in that neighborhood, on that street, the gravel road. My children play on it. There's, like, has been stated that people do drive fast down our road. Even if you guys put a stop sign, people are going to go through it. They're still going to be, it's not a good idea. And I like the small town, the quiet little area that we have. I just don't want to see the trash, the speeding, accidents, my children outside playing on the street, you know, I just, it's not a good idea.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other opponents? See none, or close the public hearing. Mr. Mumgaard.
Well, I'm one of the city councilmen for that area, and I'm going to vote for this plan, and I think it's only fair that I tell you why. This connection of Beetle Street to First came up 20-plus years ago, and we heard the same objections at that time. It did not follow through, we did not put Beetle Street through to First Street. Now, if you look at the plans for that area, that area developed back at the time that First Street did not exist. Beetle Street was always, from the very beginning, going to be a collector street that runs from Cary to First Street. The only reason it didn't go that extra half a block was because First Street didn't exist. We built First Street many years ago, and so that hurdle, that problem, got alleviated. Now, I understand, and I certainly love about what you say about the quality of life there, it is a very quiet area, and I certainly don't want to hurt that in any way. But I also point out that, as I say, Beetle Street is a collector street, and it goes north of Sixth Street through a is a collector street, and it goes north of Sixth Street through a very similar neighborhood. People live there too. I represent those people also. And that street has not become, I don't think, a deterioration of the quality of life in there. Certainly, you deserve enforcement. You deserve, people need to comply with the speed limits and all of the driving rules in that area, and I would insist that you, that the city give that to you. One other factor that comes into play is, as you indicated, we have a problem on Washington Street. Well, let's face it. A good number of those people that live in your neighborhood, if they want to go south, they end up on Washington Street. That was never intended. That is not the best of all possible things, and giving you another southern access point, or the only, really Jefferson doesn't count because it's on the edge of all the houses. Another access point to the south is the best thing overall for the city. Those are my reasons for voting for it. I will point out that Osage is also on the plan for several years further down with the hope that opening both of those streets to First Street will reduce the amount of traffic on either one of them. Basically, this is a balance in my mind between what we have to do for the betterment of the city and what impact we can keep it from having on that neighborhood. And that's why I'm going to vote for it.
Mr. Ingberg.
I'm just going to provide a little information from our meeting with Jeff Thompson, myself, and the couple that came up initially to speak to us. I was contacted by them, as was Mr. Thompson, as I believe Councilman Gaines and I both represent them now with the new redistricting. We met with them and explained to them how, even though it's on next year's, not this year's, because you have to fund these projects. This isn't funded, so what would happen this construction year? But, that being said, obviously with the turnout tonight, there's a lot of concern amongst the neighbors, and as I've always maintained, we straddle a line where we represent the people that live in our ward, and we also represent the community at large. So, I certainly understand what Mr. Mumgarth's saying. But, I will suggest this. Since we do have other areas, other roadways in that area, and we've considered putting through like Third Street into the business park and Osage, since they're out there anyway, I doubt we'll be able to fund this even next year, the Beetle connection. So, what I'll suggest is, I'll make an amendment that we remove this particular project from the one and six-year road program. Remove it. And that'll give us some time to speak with the neighborhood a little bit more, and we'll also let Mr. Thompson decide whether or not it's more feasible to connect and fund the Osage Street connection and the Third Street connection, because we've talked about those a lot also. So, for tonight's purposes, because there is a concern, and I do represent these people, I'll pull that, it's not funded this year anyway, I'll pull that out of the one and six-year road program as an amendment. If the rest of the council chooses to, and if the city engineer determines it's in the best interest to put it back in at some point, so be it. I'll be able to get, Mr. Gaines, I will be able to tell these folks ahead of time when that happens, and maybe let them know when it's going to be introduced. But, I think we have a little more work to do, and so I'll make that amendment, Mayor.
So, just so everybody's clear, the motion to amend is to remove the Beetle connection from the one and six-year road plan?
Correct.
Okay. Is there a, oh, we're still in public hearing. I closed the public hearing. Let me get a motion on the floor, and then we'll take the amendment. Is there a motion to approve resolution R. 190246? Motion by Councilman Glover. Second by Councilman Gaines. So, we got a second, so we got the original motion on the floor. Now, we have the motion to amend to remove it. Is there a second on the motion to amend?
No.
You second, so second by Councilman Gaines. So, discussion on the motion to amend. And again, the amendment is to pull it from the one and six. Mr. Gaines.
I'm going to support the motion to amend, but I have a question because with the new board or ward boundaries, we're right on, are we confirmed that this is in Ward Two? Regardless, I'm going to vote the same way, but, okay. I just wanted some clarification on that.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
I'm going to oppose the motion to amend. I do feel for the people that live along this neighborhood, and I do understand your concerns. But, as Mr. Ingberg alluded to, we have to look at the whole city here and not just one street. We need more than one street as an alternative to 84th Street, Osage, Beetle, and Third Street, and I think that's in the plan going forward. But, by doing all three and anything else we can come up with, we're alleviating pressure on 84th Street, which we all know is a big problem. The traffic through there is problematic, especially when cars are trying to pull out, making a left turn. You know, we've all, goes on. So, for that reason, I'm opposing this amendment. That's all. Thank you.
Mr. Ingberg.
Just briefly, for those that may not be aware, this particular project's been on our one and six-year road plan since 2012, I believe, and it's been sitting there, never getting a priority, never being funded. The only reason topography was done, and Mr. Thompson can tell me if I'm wrong, was because we had enough money in the budget to do a little bit preliminary work to determine what cost might be someday if we do it. That being said, I don't see any harm removing the one and six-year road program. At least it gives some indication to the folks sitting out in the audience that are concerned, that we care enough to talk to them a little bit more about it and explore all the possibilities that we may avoid ever putting it through. And if we determine otherwise, then we'll decide that when it happens.
Any, Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, I'm going to, I'll support taking it off too, but I am going to say this. Once we put it back on, we need to do all three of them all at once. So, once we do get to that plan, instead of doing one and then waiting for two or three years and doing the other one and waiting for two or three years, let's just get it done all at once, and that'll alleviate everybody's problems. So, I'll support taking it off now, but when it comes back on, I want all three of them done.
Thank you. Any other council discussion? Okay, so a yes vote will support the amendment to remove it, and no vote will leave it as is. Please vote.
Six yeas, two nays by Sunday and Mumgarth.
Amendment passes, so the motion is amended. We also have another amendment. Staff is requesting an amendment to resolution R. 190246. You've got a memo in regards to that. The motion to amend resolution R. 190246 is to add project number M. 483-265, which is 90th Street and Grunther Street for improvement in design to the 2019-2020 year. Add project number M. 483-265, which is the 90th Street and Grunther Improvements Right-of-Way Acquisition and Construction to 2020-21 year, and to remove project 483-265, which is the 90th Street Improvements Papillion Commons from the 2020-21 year. Is there a motion to amend? Motion by Councilman Klue. Second by Councilman Gaines. Do we have any proponents on the motion to amend? Any opponents? Any council discussion? Mr. Sunday.
I just have a question for Mr. Thompson. Are we, are we still going to be making improvements to 90th Street as part of the other expenditures you list here for asphalt overlays? I'm concerned about 90th Street. It's in terrible condition, and it has, and I've been harping on this since I've been on the council. So, I really would like to know what's going to be done in the short term with regard to 90th Street from Grunther to Highway 370.
Mr. Thompson.
Sure, and that's a good question. Obviously, it's a fine balance between spending an absorbent amount of money on temporary fixes when we're going to come back in another year or two and completely tear that pavement out and replace it. So, our intent would be to go through and do some spot repairs on some of the areas that have significant base failures, full-depth repairs, do a little more increase in patching. But, I would be hesitant on doing full removals or a mill and overlay on that section of roadway, considering it, you know, you're probably talking around a six-figure number to mill and overlay that.
Okay, and my concern isn't just because of the, all the bumps in the road. The sidewalks that the children use to walk to Trumbull Park School come very close to that roadway in part, and stretches a sidewalk are like a foot or less, or a foot or two off the roadway in places, very close. And it concerns me, it really does, because we've got a relatively narrow road that a lot of people use every day going to and from work, and all those bumps there. It concerns me from a safety aspect as well as the wear and tear on the cars, obviously, but that's all.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
So, I just have a few questions with regard to what we're proposing as far as putting on versus what we're taking off, and I'm just kind of looking at the cost estimates. And I'm looking at the 90th Street project being about a $2.5 million expenditure, and if I look at what's being removed, obviously, we don't have an SID contribution, so I'm looking at a $1 million city share. So, I'm seeing a one and a half million dollar gap there. So, what ripple effect does this have on other projects within that same timeframe?
Either Mr. Thompson or Ms. Myers.
Well, and again, what I would just reiterate is that this is the one and six-year road plan. So, all it does is designate those areas that we're looking at. Certainly, we're going to have to find a funding source for every piece within this one and six-year road plan. So, what I guess I would say is leaving in and keeping in 90th Street is just the first step in the process to find funding and do the improvements. And so, if you need additional clarification, I will turn it over to Jeff.
No, I think that addresses my question. It just comes down to the fact is that we're looking at adding about an eleven and a half dollars into a plan, granted. There's other projects that are already listed in the 2020 year one plan, so there's no question that some of those projects that we're looking at approving by adding another one in, obviously, it's going to tax our budget. So, that's just part of my concern.
Thank you. Ms. Klue.
Thank you. I am grateful to see this move up. With several years of living there and being on the council, this has been a continuous concern to many of us where this road is, the lack of streets. We've started to get street, I mean, many of us know the whole history there. I realize this is not guaranteed funding, but it absolutely is putting it up higher. It's giving it a more precedence of what's going on. And honestly, I'm real hopeful that by seeing it come up higher on the list that maybe we can find some grants or some partnerships, something positive to happen there. You know, it's kids, it's vehicles, it's bumpy. If people aren't paying attention, it does get very dangerous. So, I am grateful and appreciative that this has gotten moved up and is becoming a higher priority within this plan. So, thank you for the good work on this.
Mr. Jaworski.
I just kind of want to mention too, I kind of agree with Mr. Stube. I mean, we're losing a million and a half that we got to come up with, so I'm a little concerned about that because what else is going to have to suffer? So, we got to really pay attention to that, and I get it. There's a lot of roads out there that need to be fixed. My neighborhood's got roads that need to be fixed, but, you know, we just, we all got to kind of work our way through all this and come up with something. But, I am concerned with the million and a half that we're losing, so thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Sunday.
Mr. Thompson, I have one more question. I think I remember correctly. Wasn't this road the number-one problematic road in the study that we recently did in the entire city of Papillion? We had the study done.
On a cumulative average, yes, it had the lowest PCI rating. The PCI, the pavement condition index is based on segments between intersections, and so when you add up the segments between the intersections from Grunther to Highway 370, yes, it did have the lowest PCI rating of any other street section in the city of Papillion.
And, Mr. Mayor, my recollection is the reason we did that study was so that we could more intelligently focus our public funds on the areas that needed it the most.
And it's a good education point because we're talking about concern for dollars, million dollars, and we're talking about the data, just public education. Be two budget cycles now ago. We actually hired a company to come in and map our entire road system and actually use data to rate the conditions of it, all the way from excellent condition to end failure. And we've got that. The report came back, I think about in the January timeframe. It's GIS data, so it is available for people to see, and they can see the condition of all of them. And then, because we now had real data to work with, and the budgets we're in now in, we actually dramatically increased our road repair budget. I think it was about six, seven years ago, we budgeted about $250,000 a year for road repairs. A lot of it was the advocacy of Ms. Klue. I think it was about five years ago, we doubled it to half a million. And now, because we had real data, gave us the confidence to raise it again. Actually, this year's budget sold, I think it's $2.2 million. So, we did increase it almost two mil, well, 1.7 million with that data. So, tie a little bit of the conversations about concern for funding, but Mr. Sunday's comment about the data, you know, public education. Any other public discussion? I mean, council discussion. Please vote on the motion to amend, and again, a yes vote will make the changes. A no vote will keep it as is.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
So, that one passes. So, now we have the original motion as amended twice. Again, the amendments are regarding 90th Street coming into play and Beetle Street coming out. Any other council discussion on the motion as amended? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
Motion passes. Next is item F. 9, resolution R. 190250. I'll just make a quick comment. Thanks for the public for coming out. I think it does show we listen, so appreciate that. Item F. 9, resolution R. 190250, a resolution to ratify the Papillion Public Library Board of Advisors bylaws. Is there a motion to approve resolution R. 190250? Motion by Councilman Jaworski. Second by Councilman Glover. Do we have any proponents? Any opponents? Council discussion? Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
It's all the regular agenda items. I don't think we've had any committees meet in the last two weeks. Do we have any comments from the floor? See none. Any council comments? Mr. Stube.
Thank you, Mayor. A couple of things. One would be is that last council meeting, we passed a resolution relative to the potential for a lawsuit against Gretna. And I understand through the city administrator that apparently Gretna is moving forward with doing some things relative to the agreement that we both came to pass. And so, I guess I'm just wondering what steps, Gretna, if you can kind of give us an update as far as what steps, how long that's going to take. I'm assuming it's multiple approvals that have to go through city council, so I appreciate that.
I'll give a general update, and then if there's more specifics, have Ms. Myers, because I think she's had the latest conversations with the city administrator. But, both our city attorney and city administrator met with their respective counterparts in Gretna after the council did authorize legal action. And the indications are that they will agree to abide by the contract as it was written and negotiated, which implies then that they would need to update their comprehensive plan in relation to the growth maps or the future land use maps. And they've agreed to do that. They need a little bit of time because they don't have staff. They need to work with some consultants. And then, to your point, that is a multiple-step process because that has to go to their planning commission, and it's got to go to the city council. So, it'll take a little bit of time, but they did, I think they gave a date, a general timeframe on when they would meet that. So, I think we've got a date certain or pretty close to one. And then, on the de-annexation, I think the indication was as well that they would proceed with that. Ms. Myers.
And just to add some dates to that, they're holding a special planning commission meeting in January to consider the amendment to the comprehensive plan, excuse me, plan, and then that will be forwarded on to the city council. They're doing the legal description on that area that needs to be de-annexed, and they're expecting that to be the first or second meeting in January that the city council would first consider.
So, I think at least from our administration's perspective, we believe they're now agreeing to abide by the contract as it was negotiated.
Okay, so, based on, excuse me, based on that timeframe, would appear to me that these are resolutions, they're not ordinances, because we would anticipate that both take place in January. So, that's positive.
The growth management, I think, would be an ordinance. So, that would take three readings. De-annexation, would that be an ordinance? Or, would be the other way around? Comprehensive plan is a resolution, is an ordinance.
Okay, very good, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I do have one other comment, if I could please, and...
We'll get you. We'll get you back in queue, because your mic's off. Mr. Ingberg.
I could defer if you want me to.
No, there's a number of them in queue. Go ahead.
Because we don't convene again until after the first of the year, I'd like to take just a moment to thank all the employees represented by the department heads around this table, and all the employees that work day-to-day and make the city feel like a small community, no matter what size it is. The employees' response to people, the hard work they put in, the extra pride they have in what they do. To me, we're an awful, awfully lucky city to have the employees that we have, and honestly, they make our job very easy. There's a lot of cities around the United States that wish they had the working relationship we have between our employees, the, the staff, the administrative staff, and the council. If you don't believe me, watch a few online if you don't believe me. This is, uh, this is a fantastic organization, and most of that credit goes, if not all of it, goes to the department heads, staff, and employees, and I thank them for all their work.
Thank you, Mr. Jaworski.
Yeah, I just kind of want to spin off what Mr. Mumgarth said about Thompson, about what a wonderful job they did, and how, if you guys haven't been down there and seen how beautiful that place is, it's unbelievable. The Field House is unbelievable, the Rec Center is unbelievable. We were very, very lucky to have those guys build that for us, and Laura, you did a great job also. Thank you for all your hard work and everything you're doing, and that place is unbelievable. And then, the only other thing I'm going to say, this is kind of shooting towards Chris. We just sworn an officer that came back after three years, so always remember that.
Ms. Kluk.
Thank you. I just wanted to pass along to Tony and his team how many compliments I'm hearing on how our city looks, and that it's not just one small location, and it's not one building, and I'm sure many of these department heads have taken time, whether it's the library or whether it's the police station or whatever, but, I mean, a huge part of it goes to you, Tony, and your team. People are noticing, and it's been interesting just to go out in the evenings and look at how many families are out and walking around, and, you know, you'll watch them, and they'll like meet people they've never seen and actually stop and talk, whether it's for two seconds because it's really cold, or if they sit in there for five or 10 minutes. But I've heard many people, and I've received a few phone calls, and I get stopped a lot because I practically live at the grocery stores, but the positive impact it's really having, that this community continues to decorate, and I, I hope it's true, you're not hearing, I'm not hearing about vandalism. It seems like people respect it, they appreciate it, and we're seeing the beauty of it, and I think that's what really makes people go, yeah, this is where we are, this is where I want to be moving forward. And so thank you to everybody who has made that Christmas and the holiday decorations completely amazing.
Thank you. Mr. Stube.
Yeah, Mayor, you had already mentioned this, but I also want to thank the people for coming out tonight. You know, we, I, I sometimes have a tendency to forget that it's just not the people in the audience that are watching, but I had a lady the other night that came up to me and said that she watches the city council meetings, and so I thought, well, there's other people out there that are watching, and we just want to thank them also for tuning in to our council meetings.
I think we get, we get that feedback a lot, and I think sometimes council chambers will be empty, and I'll take time to say, hey, why we're doing what we're doing, and it's because of that, we get a lot of people that watch it, so it's good education, so thank you. Mr. Glover.
I have a 150 question. At what point, you know, after the first of the year, would there be information on each month of what's going on, and, and where would it be posted so that people are aware of it? Because I know we had the kickoff when we had the light ceremony at Winter Wonderland, and I'm starting to get questions about that, and, you know, talking with some third-grade kids at Bell last week, they were asking, well, you know, what's coming, are we going to have Winter Wonderland every month? And I said, no, I don't think we're going to do that, but I, how's that going to work?
There's a, there's a large committee, and again, anybody's welcome to be on the committee, so somebody's saying, hey, I hadn't heard about this, and I want to be involved. Probably the easiest way to plug in is re, go down to the Papillion Community Foundation or call Laura, the executive director. They're, they're allowing some staff time for it. But there is a website, papillion150.org. I believe it is live now, and one of the things on there is a calendar of events, and I believe it got loaded last week with the initial wave of events, and there is more than one thing every single month of the year already. Some are little things, some are big things. And what we're encouraging civic groups to do is if they've got an event they want to do, it's not all city-sponsored, so we're really hoping that it becomes an organic community event, and somebody's got an event, and they want to make it an official 150 and get the promotion and the support behind it, make it a little bit bigger. There is a process where they can apply, and that application's on the website as well, through the foundation. And if they then get sponsored, we, we can bring some resources to it to help raise awareness of it, make it an official event. Because of that fact, the calendar will probably hopefully be ever-changing, there's things continually being added to it. So there is a Facebook page, there's a Twitter, and there is a website, and at least for the calendar of events, the website would probably be the easiest if people just want to go to it and see it. From a city side, we'll be doing a lot of communication, so probably the water bill, all of our social media from this point forward will probably incorporate it as well. We're hoping the Times will pick it up and keep a regular update, and then the 150 does have a media or a marketing committee as well, so they're going to continually be working on how they get the word out. But papillion150.org. Any other council comments? Just a couple of things from the last couple of weeks. We, people are familiar, we have the employee leadership group that we meet for about 18 months with a select group of employees. We just kicked the, I think it's the fourth group off, we just kicked that off this month. So I spent some time visiting with them, kind of giving them a little bit of history on Papillion, a little bit of my path into the mayor, and some of the things we've dealt with maybe the last 10 years, to maybe give appreciation for maybe why we do some of the things we do now. Some of it's based on history and things we've dealt with, so I think that was a good discussion, other than I rambled for about three and a half hours, and I'm not sure they appreciated that or not. Chamber Commerce also had a holiday open house, went to that. This, the wastewater agency had a monthly meeting. Nothing really big there, the primary thing was just paying the bills and getting through the holiday season. On the wastewater, the, the next step is it's, the soft-market test is occurring, and so the kind of the, the high-level scope of work for the P3 partnership is being tested out in the market to, to see if people are interested in it and what feedback is coming back. I think we should have the feedback on that in 60 days, maybe. And at that point, then, I think some information will start coming back to the council again. Do we like the direction? Do we like the scope? And that, then, I think will inform the actual RFP. So not, probably not a lot of activity for the next two months, I would anticipate. And then, Mr. Glover went and talked to third graders. I went and talked to third graders at Prairie Queen as well. Second grade, they've been asking us to come in. Second grade, I think, is when they talk about government rights, responsibilities, laws, branches of government, levels of government. They actually get into taxes, so pretty sophisticated for second grade. Third grade, depending on the school, it's either a little bit more on government, or they want to learn, they're learning about history. And I think the way they can relate is local Papillion history, people that have influenced major decisions that have occurred. And so those tend to be the talks at the second and third that we're doing, so it's nice that they're, the curriculum is bringing us into it. I think that's major events. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion by Councilman Glover? Second by Councilman Gaines. Please vote.
Eight yeas, zero nays.
We adjourn. Merry Christmas.